Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
May I stand? The Republican Party stands. One nation, one God, and His will. The Republicans, the Americans, we're all for it.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Bill McKenna and Neil Husvar. Thank you. A little call, please.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smearle?
Here. A dispens for the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A. Minutes is a regular meeting of the Scranton Parking Authority held March 26, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So this Sunday, April 13, from 2 to 5, at the Ukrainian Club on Railroad Avenue, they will have their Easter ham and kabassi raffle. There'll be 15 winners of one 10-pound ham and two rings of kabassi. That's all I have.
I'll add this to announcements. It is on third order. I was happy to see that the Parking Authority passed their, put the audit out for bids, so they've started that process.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanis.
Mr. Smearle, next week, when you do the moment of silence, why don't we pray for spring? I'm getting fed up.
Two moments.
I don't know how many people realize it, but this week is National Library Week across the country. And the library, it's one of the gifts that we have in this country, and we should all take advantage of it. I certainly did when I was growing up, and since I've retired, it's one of my joys. I have Alzheimer's on both sides of my family, and I was reading about a study in which it said one of the magic bullets to protect yourself from dementia is lifelong learning. And the library certainly assists anybody in doing that. But a lot of people think of the library as a stuffy warehouse for old books. And yes, there are books there, but it's so much more. I brought some of the flyers about some of the activities that is going on at the library. May 1, there's a presentation at the Albright about how, for seniors, how to protect yourself from scam artists and what to do if you're a victim. Here's a flyer on teen programs in the month of May. There's Teen Game Night, and I mean, I don't understand these role-playing games, but they have it. There's a Teen Creator Lab. There is a Teen Festival of Stories. There's an escape room for teens. Never heard of that. And a Teen Anem Club, and all kinds of things. Then there's movie matinees on Wednesday, all free up at the library. Let's see, May 7, Anora. May 14, Amelia Perez. May 21, Baby Girl. And May 28, Nosferatu, a Gothic movie. Then, hey, if you like arts and crafts, Knott, K-N-O-T, Not Another Stitch Group. You could learn how to crochet and knit and everything else. And let's see, Super Smash Brothers Ultimate 18-plus Tournament. I don't even know what that is. You're supposed to test your skills and compete against fellow gamers for people who do computer games, whatever. There's a book club, May 21, The Lion Women of Tehran, whatever. And then there'll be a history tour of the Scranton Public Library itself in May. All kinds of things going on. And here is a real winner. Every year, the Friends of the Scranton Public Library sponsor a bus trip. Last year, we went to the American Museum of Natural History in New York City. And if you saw the movie, A Night at the Museum, that was the museum. It was wonderful, okay? This year, August 16, we will be going to the Franklin Institute in Philadelphia. And these bus trips are wonderful, you know? I mean, it's a nominal price, you know, includes everything, you know? I think it's $85 if you're a member of the Friends, $90 if you're not. And if you're over 50, I think your membership is like $5 a year. That allows you to get discounts on buying books that are book sales and all kinds of wonderful things. So I'm here to tell you, you have a gift from Joseph Albright in the Scranton Public Library. By the way, Nancy K. Holmes, one of your predecessors who sat up there, her namesake library in Green Ridge is open again. All the ADA changes have been made. It's beautiful, serves not only Scranton but Dunmore. So, you know, hey, do yourself a favor. This is something that's there for your use, the use of your children, the use of your parents, everybody. We ask no questions. We charge you no fees. Enjoy the library. Thank you.
Joan, we were there. We were there waiting for you, but you didn't come.
I know, I saw, read in the paper. I wasn't, I was sick.
Thank you. Norma Jeffries?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and it's been three weeks since I've been here. And I try to keep up with some of the things that were going on here by looking at the ECTV, which is really great, but my family sort of yelled at me. We're on vacation, you wouldn't have to watch that. But one of the things that I wanted to, that hit me while I was away, was the political environment. And I've met a lot of people coming to city council. I've been coming for just about six years, and I've met a lot of folks who are sitting out in the hallway and would get to chit-chat. And quite a few of them are running for offices now. And I thought to myself, I said, this is interesting, that so many people have a great interest in the city of Scranton, that they want to see what they could do to make it better. So as I listened to social media, as to some of the things that were being discussed, you know, I thought, this is all well and good. I live in Scranton, and I'm sure all the other people that ride around Scranton. We know where the potholes are. We know where the dilapidated houses are. We know where the homeless and the, they don't want me to say homeless anymore, I'm trying to think of what word they keep telling me, the unhoused are. So we know all of that. I don't need anybody to tell me that. What I need you to do, those of you that are running for office, I need you to tell me, what is your plan? What is your plan to handle these things that are deficient in the city of Scranton? What is your plan to fix the potholes? Tell me what your plan is, and then maybe I can make an elegant decision as to who to vote for. People do come and ask me, you know, who should I vote for? Who should I vote for? Listen to your candidates. Listen to what they have to say. See if their plan is going to be something that's going to be good for Scranton. Is it going to help us out, any? And I haven't seen that yet, so maybe I've been missing it, maybe I haven't listened to the proper venues, but I haven't heard that. So any of you who are running for office, it would be very beneficial to not only me, but to the city of Scranton, to the citizens of Scranton. Tell us what your plan is. Tell us what you're going to do to help us as we go forward in 2026. One of the other things that I noticed as I was out there is that I wanted to know more about the Rubicon. I was very disappointed in that, that that was voted on and voted in for a company, from what I understand, did not meet the requirements the first time around. And then to turn around and give them another five-year contract. So I decided, and I was asking one of the people in council here tonight, I need to find out more. What is it that we, as a city, would provide something to a company that was deficient in their operation, and we continue to give them a budget? So that was something that was on my plate as to what I was concerned about. And, oh, another thing that I was thinking about as well, well, me and my homeless, one of the places I visited, they had a lot of homeless people. We're not alone in this situation. I was in San Diego and I was in Hawaii, and they both have unbelievable homeless people. And they just sleep on the street, and they pass the bill that the street is theirs as well as any other citizen. So, you know, this is a national problem. It's not just a Scranton problem. But I'm just hoping that going forward, that Scranton can rejuvenate and do something about our homeless situation. And we're finished with winter now, so I guess our cold blues are finished for the year. Well, maybe not, because it's supposed to be cold tonight, you know? But, you know, hopefully by the time 2026 rolls around, that we can have something positive, another place that we can have for the code blue situation, to help those unhoused people that are out there in the street. Okay, that's all I have for tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Bob Bowles?
Evening, Council, Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, I'm going to bring up some things here in a little different way, in a format. A child falls overboard, off a boat, or into a pool. And what does the person watching them say to the child? Start running. It's what you learn to do in a splash park. They never had the opportunity to learn how to swim. The reason I bring that up, we have Na'od turned into a mud park. Used to be Lake Lincoln. We all learned to swim. Now we got to learn how to run on a little pad, which is a joke. I watched Gahan and Cognetti at Chili's. Chili should be in Scranton, not Dixon City. She's not the mayor there, and whatever he thinks he is, he couldn't show up at his own meeting because he claimed he was ill, but yet with Pelosi and Cognetti in the pouring rain in front of the courthouse. I had the Trump trailer on its way to come down there. By the time we really realized what was going on with Pelosi and all, by the time we'd have got there, it was breaking up. But the fun part would have been, the idiots that were all standing out there would want to run out in front of the truck and think they were going to stop it. Well, I don't stop with the truck. I didn't stop in Philadelphia, Texas, or anywhere else. We would have came. You want to commit suicide, run in front of the truck, and we'll give you the courtesy to show what we really think about you. After we run over you, we will back up over you to see if you're okay, and you could take your Democrat flag with you. This is our country, and what I saw there was the most pathetic display of our political people in this community, standing out there when you hit us with a 33% tax increase, idiots that are saying, oh, your property could sell for this, so that's how we're going to recess it. It's a joke, what's going on here. And we got to stop it. You got to look at Gahan. He works for the county. He's one of our employees. We employ him. We're his employer. Where the hell's he come off thinking he could spend our money to defend his political way he wants to turn around and get a puppy next to him that's going to do his bidding, rather than what's right for the people in the community? He did it here, and he's trying to do it there. That's why he put his head on the body of a skunk. He skunked us here, he's not going to get away with it over there. I'm running for mayor in Scranton as a Republican right, and I should have been able to get on the ballot, even though they're talking I can't run or take the seat later on. It's all effervescent bungements and other things going on. But because we had a rogue Republican, or whatever he is, Charlie Spano, he filed against it. But the law tells that I can run, get on the ballot, whether I could take the seat, that's down the road. That's the future. So the way we look at it, the past is gone because judges are quoting the past. The present is now, and the future doesn't belong to any of us. Who's going to win? Who's going to lose? But the first order, if I am elected in Scranton, will be taking down the damn Biden signs off the expressway in Spruce Street and taking our city back. We got to turn around and start looking at what is our future? You know, taxpayer money, the people in this community, we looked at the leadership. We could have built a FedEx bill, a Flex building, and you're familiar, Mr. Smearle, I'm sorry, with Flex buildings and all that. We could have built one of them and kept the bubble can factory here. We know how to think out of the box, but we don't here. We could have been building Flex buildings in other areas of the community and bringing in cash dollars and saving the taxpayers this ridiculous increase and the stupidity behind the reassessment. You got realtors, the only time they really do a damn thing is if they see somebody hot coming in the door, then they get active on your property. Other than that, it'll sit there forever. They look at this and look at that. You can't tell us what it'll bring in your opinion, and we're going to do something. We're filing lawsuits. They should be filed tomorrow against the assessment, against the tax, and against Gahan, politicizing himself at our expense to cover up his issues at our expense, and it's going to come to an end. Because now the people in this community, sir, are going to take Scranton and Lackawanna County back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Les Spindler?
Being a Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner, I've got to bring something up from last week. Dave Dobson was talking about RFK Jr., and he said a word that Councilwoman Rothschild didn't like, and she was trying to reprimand him. Well, it wasn't nice what he said, but the U.S. Constitution allows him to say something like that, whether you like it or not. I've been coming to these meetings for many, many years, and years ago Judy Gitelli tried to silence us. She tried to lock us out of City Hall. We had the ACLU come here, and that's what they said. We can't say anything vulgar, can't say anything threatening, but other than that, what Dave said wasn't vulgar, it wasn't threatening. You cannot stop him from saying something like that. You might not like it, but you got to live with it. Because if you want us to bring the ACLU in again, we can do that. Okay. Last year, North Rebecca, which goes along the side of my house, was supposed to be, it was on the paving list, wasn't paved in the spring, and it's, oh, maybe it'll be paved in the fall. It wasn't paved in the fall. Now, it's not on this year's paving list. I'd like to know what the heck is going on. Do you have to be an elected politician to get your street paved in this city? I guess that's what you have to do, because that's, they're the only ones getting their Next thing, I brought this up quite a while ago, about a big, huge pave cut on Dorothy Street. Well, it was fixed quite a few weeks ago, but they never sealed it. If they don't seal it, it's a big pave cut, at least. They fixed it, but if it's not sealed, it's just going to come back up. They don't do things the right way. Next thing, I know Lynn LeBraski has brought this up. The bridge on Broadway that goes over Lackawanna River, there's concrete barriers there. Why? I haven't seen anything been done there for two years or whatever those barriers have been. Does anybody know what's going on there?
It's to restrict traffic and restrict the wait.
Why don't they just fix the bridge instead of restricting wait? Why do you want to restrict traffic? People go.
So that you don't have three full lanes of traffic on the bridge at one time.
I think that's ridiculous. Okay, next thing. Oh, I've said this before, for years, it's all I hear is Joe Biden got bashed here. Well, the way to shape our country's in now, it's ridiculous, with all these tariffs, was on Good Morning America yesterday. Even Trump's allies are against them now with all these tariffs. It's that Ted Cruz and Rand Paul, two of his biggest supporters, said he's going to ruin the Republican Party for years if he doesn't stop with these tariffs. So even his own party is turning against him. And on the local 28 News, they had a story, "The Maya Angelou Memoir, a Holocaust Book, Are Among Those Pulled From the Naval Academy Library in a DEI Purge." This administration is doing so much bad for this country, it's unbelievable. He's a racist, he's an anti-Semitic, and I don't think there's anybody he likes but himself. So, as I said last week, after this guy's done with everything he's doing, people are going to wish Joe Biden was back in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Lenny Srebro?
Mr. Waldenberg, can we find out about the history of that North Rebecca, why it was removed from the list, and what the plans are moving forward?
I will.
And then the Dorothy Street, was that paved cut part of that walk-through that we talked about in caucus?
No. It was a separate pave cut. It was paved, however, wasn't sealed properly, according to Mr. Spindler.
Okay. Good evening, Council, Lenny Srebro, Kaiser Valley flood victim. But ironically, I'm not here to talk about the flooding problem tonight. I just recently found out about the proposed solar panel farm that's supposed to be put in up the Morgan Highway, a little bit up the hill there. I want you to know that I lived right there for about 35 years before I moved to where I'm at now. I like to think I know almost every inch of that mountain. I most, over the years, I mostly rode a four-wheel-drive ATV on every single trail, and I made my own trail where you couldn't make trails. I did multiple hikes with different people by foot all over that mountain, and I also camped all over that mountain. That field that the solar panel is proposed to be on is right on top of an incline that goes down to Pike Street, where there's about eight homes there with families, and that's where I used to live. I noticed after heavy storms up on that mountain, on that field, after heavy rain, when the water pooled, it would be all kinds of neat colors, like a rainbow. There's stuff in that ground that is just, has been always coming up to the top, that it goes down to, like I said, Pike Street where neighbors are. There are also many mine shafts right there in that mountain. One was about 100 yards right behind the house I lived in, and it was wide open until after I moved. I understand that there was a superfund project that they did many years ago to clean that up, the toxic waste they were illegally dumping in there. The way that I understand it is, you can't touch that ground, you know? No doubt about it, they're going to have to dig up, they're going to have to level off that field, because it is rough. And I understand that you guys okayed it, you know? It's all toxic waste under there. And here's something to think about. When I moved there in the mid-'80s, my daughter at that time was a toddler. She grew up there until she got married in her 20s. She developed MS, multiple sclerosis. She's in the advanced stages of it now. I come from a large family, 10 immediate brothers and sisters, 13 uncles, they all have children, and they all have grandchildren. None have MS. We can't prove it, but we do believe that MS was caused by growing up there with all those chemicals and the toxins that are buried below there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Srebro. Ron Elman?
Yes. Last week, I heard Princess Paige on my car stereo, but because of all the background noise of her patting herself on the back continuously, I finally turned it off. You know, I should appreciate her more coming down the hill to spend some time with her subjects. This is cherished time to see her, I guess. You know, for years, I've occasionally referred to the sour stench of graft and corruption and favoritism going on right here in this, this area, just this little circle around It seems finally, it just got so overwhelming, there wasn't no way to submerge it anymore. If just this minute amount that was exposed in the paper the last few days, just think what is going on right under our noses in this city. Things get out that are never printed, they're never told to the public. Two days before Mr. Cartwright, problems rose, people at the tourist club were talking about it. That's the same here. These people knew a lot of these things, it just was kept quiet from voters, from the people paying for everything. That's got to quit. You people don't vote. You don't. Too many people just have no interest in what's going on right under their noses. It's a shame. This could be such a good city with the, there's so much wasted money on grants to restaurants and grants to failing businesses. There's so much wasted money on grants to restaurants and grants to failing businesses, like the grant to the electric building. That was tax money just completely thrown away. A lady told me today, "I am completely in favor of the park system." She told me, "According to the school records, there's not enough children in that area to warrant this little swimming area." And I don't know, it ought to be thought of, maybe the money could be used better to try to clean up Capous Avenue. Unless people vote, these are the results you get. Scranton, Scranton isn't just the electric city. I think Scranton's become the crooked city. I talked to, like I have always say, two, three people a week, four people. Now, a month to the, I mean, months to the coming elections, our mayor decides to try to make up for four years of nothing. Nothing for the people except downtown paving some streets and so forth. It's too late. I sincerely hope her political career is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Barbara O'Malley?
Last week, Mr. Smurl brought to the attention of the public a letter titled "Conflict of Interest Concern: Todd Pousley Candidate for City Council." It was written by attorney Brendan Fitzgerald of the law firm of Joyce, Carmody, and Moran. Attorney Fitzgerald did not identify himself as a city resident, nor representing a city resident. So are we to believe that Mr. Attorney Fitzgerald just woke up one day and said, "I think I'll write a letter about Scranton's city council race?" A reporter from the Scranton Times efforts to reach members of the law firm were unsuccessful. I hope the reporter tries again because I would like to know why they interjected themselves into the city elections. They're a Pittston-based law firm. Mr. Smurl directed the city clerk to contact the State Ethics Commission. Maybe they will get an answer. I hope so, because if this is left unchecked, anyone running for office could be targeted like Mr. Pousley was. As for conflicts of interest, across the Commonwealth, employed men and women from various professions serve as elected or appointed members of boards and governing bodies. If a potential conflict with their business or personal life comes before them, the ethical option is to recuse oneself from the discussion and vote. Surely, the attorneys at Joyce, Carmody, and Moran know that. The public should also be aware that this law firm is poised to be awarded a lucrative contract by the majority of the Scranton School Board, which is apparently unfazed by their interference in another governing body's election. That does not bode well for the residents of Scranton. In closing, it is my hope that Scranton residents do not fall for these back-room shenanigans. We have come too far to go back to the good old boys' days. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Smurl, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. That's the end of our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Greetings, Counsel. Tom Coin Manuka. First, I'm not going to talk about Rubicon, but I am going to mention 7(c), this planned revision. So we're getting free revisions now? We have a 214-gallon-a-day sewer system revision, and the financial impact listed is none. In the last few years, I believe I have never seen a cover sheet come before this body for a project that has actually had a financial impact listed as any other thing than none. Why is that? Next, we recently had raises that were pushed for some in council, by council, for some in the city who had not had raises for many years. Too long to go without raises, was said. This is not about those, but we have the university who was at one point paying a pilot of $225,000 a year and then dropped it, and now it's down to $150,000 after receiving $65 million in a bond. I know council was going to get tough stopping $100,000 from the racetrack gambling fund. It's funny how much the church gets from sinning. In a push for a more equitable pilot donation, the church nonprofit grab has been expanding as the pilot has been dropping. It's mentioned that they make $325 million in endowments, and I believe in other $300 million in student enrollments. So that's around $625 million, and they now pay $150,000 as a pilot. Back in 2010, council was mad as well. The University of Scranton had a total revenue of $227.8 million, and the contribution for that tax year for the pilot was $175,000. Council said it was too low when they considered it a small contribution compared to their total revenue. So in 15 years, they've increased the land they own, both income in the coffers, increased government funding requests. The total revenue has increased from $227 million to $625 million, and we look at the 2010 pilot, underpayment, as council claimed, of $175,000 noted 15 years ago. And today, we're getting $25,000 less than that. I guess we're all fine with that, and we have no problem that in 2010, they were paying more than they are now, even though they made about $400,000, oh, $400 million more, and they still need money from us. They still need those donations. Let's talk about the pilot and HUP test. I remember when this issue came up before this body, the county was supposed to have paperwork from those nonprofits in their files. What was said during the HUP test is that they were going to require the charities to provide the information that should have been there. If I build on my property without a permit, the city is not going to let me just continue to build until I get the proper paperwork in hand. They're going to stop me dead. We all know the answer. So if they're required as a nonprofit to file paperwork with the county and have not, then they do not qualify and should be taxed until they have the proper paperwork in place. But we'll wait eight months, and there's no incentive to comply because we don't push forward on it. Last for tonight, I watched the mayor state of the union's address, the state of the city address, and I heard all good things, but no one here talked about the loss of funds and the potential need for bonds. It was mentioned that she lobbied for DC Advocating for tax exemptions for municipal bonds, and I remember at one point, we had a paid lobbyist for Scranton. What happened to that? She mentioned about needing to raise money or possibly floating a bond for the Emergency Operations Center because we do not have the federal funding anymore. How come that wasn't addressed here, only the good? We have a state of the city that looks more like a political campaign flyer. Who paid for this? It says on here that we earned $6.6 million. That's fantastic, when most of it came from the $67 million that sat in the Recovery Act funds. It was not made by this body or this city, it was federal money that sat. So no one here deserves the credit for that, for money that sat in for federal funds. I'll continue this on another day because there's a lot more to go through. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Mike Mancini, Scranton. Hear me twice because I always choose my words once. The play of words has gone beyond good taste and reason both. I am proceeding accordingly. While there's choose parties, I choose the good people of Scranton. While there's plot their next move for self-satisfaction, I think about what I could do to help our city in this current climate. Here's some things that I've come up with so far. Crime in our police department, the following is in any particular order. There are so many things that have changed, either ignored or done poorly. First thing is to get the politics out of our Scranton Police Department. Switch the Scranton Police testing to which is uniform with the state police. Bring back our drug task force. Bring back the Public Safety Director. He will be promoted from the detective's ranks. It will fully investigate every local unwanted opioid-related death. There is no statute of limitations on all cold cases, and there will be some sort of closure if we could possibly find that. Utilize our drone police officers as often as possible. Prosecute crimes, including opioid-related deaths, to the full extent, using all resources available. Five K-9 teams that could detect drugs, there's 168 hours a week, every minute of each day needs that proper coverage. We also need to update the technology of real-time video at every major thoroughfare, manned and operated and watched 24 hours a day. So plan for the roads and infrastructure. Promote from within. The next DPW director will be from the ranks. No one does it better than their own employees. Pave cuts, manhole covers, the current administration putting outside firm to inspect our pave cuts, then cancel the contract. Do we ever get our money back, $500,000? Defix. Make the utilities responsible for each pave cut and every deficient manhole cover. We will have five pave cut inspectors. We will increase the daily fine for not adhering to our current ordinances from $100 a day to $1,000 a day. Our own eyes on our roads are critical to our future. Road maintenance, deferring all costs, is very important. Our amazing DPW employees will fill the potholes, seal the cracks to prevent future damage, switching out all dull signs, provide crosswalks and stop locks, one block at a time, and make a noticeable difference. We will make PA Water responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of 88% of the storm drains that they are responsible for. Need an in-house engineer who will reside in the city of Scranton. We have railroad bridges and tracks. We'll make each entity responsible for replacement of these old lower bridges that are constantly getting hit by trucks that are over 100 years old. These are some things that are owed to the good people of Scranton. We will become the blueprint locally for good government. Seems like other municipalities do more or less. I want to apologize to the other municipalities. We will get this thing right. Everyone loves the underdog. We've had three horrible mayors, cannot afford another one. $40 million from Doherty stuck us with it. We had the Southern Sewer Authority. We had a mayor that ended up in prison. And then we had Wayne Evans, who set us up for a good future, just to be riddled by somebody from out of town that doesn't care when an expansion team, we could do a lot better. I know we can. I trust that the people of Scranton need to do the right thing. We have a railway system coming through in the not-so-distant future. We are nowhere near ready for this. Every single week, there are good people that come before this council and take what they're saying to heart on the local things. I never discuss anything nationally, teach their own. My focus is on the local stuff. I know how to fix this stuff. I've been an advisor to Connor's administration for 12 years. There's a lot that I've done for this city, and there's a lot more that I could do. I've been challenged more so than most people in life, and I have been told that I am the type of person that could do this. I never give up. We don't need a failure. We need somebody to turn this city around. Mancini for Scranton. Change is coming. Good evening, counsel.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lynn Labraski, homeowner, business owner, and tonight, I'm a pretty disgusted taxpayer. So I have to talk about this. I got up here last week and said we should keep the podium to local politics. I did attend the hands-off protest, if you want to call it that, this past Saturday downtown in front of the courthouse and across the street at the federal building and also the post office. I thought it would have been a good opportunity for me to advertise that I am running for mayor in Scranton this year as a Republican candidate. And my husband actually looped around the block, dropped me off on the corner, and I immediately called him and asked him to come back and get me because I did not feel safe. There was zero police presence. There were hundreds of people. I guess some of them Googled my billboard and felt that they knew who I was, so I was no longer welcome there, and I was confronted with lots of different things, including someone sitting in front of my vehicle and other people joining them and blocking us from going down the road. Again, there was zero police presence, so that was very discouraging. And in a city that I was born and raised in, and own a home and a business in, and actually I've owned two homes because one burned down, I was booed in my own city. I was flipped a finger. And there was a lot of foul language being used at this event where there were children present, so that really bothered me. So as much as I don't want to get up here and talk about anything other than local issues, I felt that our current mayor used that platform not as a protest, but more of a rally because she is running as an incumbent for reelection this year. And so I'm going to leave it at that because I do want to take time to get to another issue that I had other things to talk about, but this came to me today. So two gentlemen reached out to me today, Keith McPhillips and Pete Williams. And Park Police River Association and HMA are hosting a fishing derby, which is, I believe, the 18th annual. It's for all children, it's ages 3 to 16. Again, it's May 3, and it's located on Grove Street, behind Ritter's Bar, next to DPW and Pine Brook. Anybody from Scranton would know that area. And then also, the registration's at 9:00 a.m. The event starts at 10:00, it ends at 1:00. And from what I, the information that I gathered, I hope I could get this all in, but they have a commission of officers that raised $4,000 for the event, which is to include tents, food, prizes, and free fishing poles for any child that doesn't have one. Also, the motorcycle club raised $2,000 to pay for the fish for this event. And so these people in our community, that care about our community, went through a lot of trouble and raised a lot of money to have the event. And I'm sorry, I'm really upset right now, but they reached out to the mayor, who refused to return their phone call, and requested using the mobile stage for the event so that they can have a platform where they can do the prizes and other things that they're doing that day. And I think this is just a terrific thing that people are doing for our children in the community because we don't want them on drugs, we don't want them joining gangs, we want them to have something to do. There's absolutely nothing in this city to do for kids, especially kids that aren't old enough to go to a bar, and then the ones that are, that's all there is for them to do. So I'm kind of going off a little bit here, and I normally don't do that. So then, they were told by someone in City Hall that the stage is available for a donation of $500... of $557. Now, I'm not really sure where they got that amount from, but $557 sounds odd, but a donation is any amount, so that would be a fee, in my opinion. And last year, they were told that there was a donation involved, but they sold the stage to the highest bidder, so now that would become an auction. Can these children and this event, can they use that stage? Is there anything that you can do as a council? And if there is a fee involved, or it's a donation, maybe 100 bucks each, there's five of yous, maybe that could cover it. I'll throw in the other 57. I mean, it's not a lot to ask for a really great event that's been going on for years for the children in the community. The mayor won't return the call. I don't understand why. I have so many other things I want to say, but, you know, I'm over time. But I mean, come on, we can't come together as a community and help our kids? The Little Leagues and the fishing derby and things that are being provided in our community for our children so they're not in trouble, so they are engaged, and they have things to do, and they're active, and they're not on their, let them go fishing, you know? Hand them in a fish, and you teach them for a day, but teach them how to fish, and can we do that for our children? Please, can we make a decision as a council to do that?
The Showmobile is available online. You have to go to the DPW website, and you order it right online.
But they said they called the mayor. She would not return their phone call.
All I can tell you is what I know.
They did get information back that it's a $557 donation.
It's a process. You have to go online. All the organizations that utilize that, they go on, they fill out the application, apply for it.
Well, apparently, they did that last year, but it got sold to a higher bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll speak to this in fifth order.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid this year. Once again, we talked about tax exempts and pilots, and pilots are a pittance. And what we really need is for the state to take responsibility for their constitution and compensate Scranton and cities like it for the excess 40%. 40%. And I'm not criticizing anything anybody does as a tax exempt. A lot of things are very noble. And once again, we got stoked with the gas company. There's no hearing tomorrow on our neck of the woods. It's all down in Luzerne County, and if you can take time off or get down there and find out where you're supposed to go. When the water company had their hearing, they had it up at Marywood College in Dunmore. We had no hearing here, and I fault Scranton politicians for part of that. Should have never been done. I got treated like some homeless bum that was looking to come in out of the cold or something. Nobody knew where the building was at the hearing. I got there halfway, and when I heard the amount that they were offering, I thought, oh, well, never certain how much money is going to be left after this is all done, and I was right there. Not much. Utilities. Fix the potholes. We need inspectors before and after for these potholes. There's several places on Crown Avenue already. It's been recently paved and really crummy repairs. So we really need somebody to inspect before and after, or at least after. And they shouldn't be in town without a permit. Now, I'll keep my comments lacking of profane, but back when Robert Kennedy Jr. was being considered for the Health and Human Services, I saw a family member on a newscast, possibly Carolyn, I may be wrong there, the sweet Caroline girl, accused Robert Jr. of distributing drugs, including heroin, to family members, and a deadly overdose resulted from heroin. And vitamin A poisoning. In Texas, kids are coming in, he's recommending vitamin A as a substitute for vaccine for measles. And by the way, it's in New Mexico and Kansas and Oklahoma now, and they're coming in with liver damage because hardly 1% of the population needs a good dose of vitamin A. The rest, six hours later, he attended the funeral of a girl that passed away last week from measles. Six hours later, first he was saying, well, we need vaccinations. Six hours later, he's quoting Quackery, you know? And by the way, he also fired a man this week who was Donald Trump's savior for developing this treatment that wasn't available in public for anybody. It was like $120,000 or $200,000. I really don't expect things to improve for Scranton with the federal government. The situation is in $6 to $10 trillion lost in the stock market in the last two months, and most of it the last week or two. Laura Lumer, here, she's 9/11 conspirator theorist. She talked to Trump, and a four-star general was fired from the National Security Council along with two or three other employees, and she's calling for execution of Trump's opponents. And April 4, he went to his golf game, and four soldiers were, lost their lives in Lithuania on a drill, and he didn't, he wasn't there to receive them, you know? He don't care about soldiers. He doesn't care about anything. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name is Bailey Semrell. Once again, I'm back to talk about Rubicon, RouteWare, and the illegal irregularities, procedural flaws, and more. Actually, also, this is new, but I didn't realize this, the blog post on the city's website, the press release from February 25. They actually list in here, the initial three-year contract with Rubicon was for $165,000. In legislation to be introduced by city council this week, the soft work only cost of Rubicon will be $33,805.20 per year for the next five years. That's not true. They didn't mention the price increases year over year. So going back to the timeline, that was the same day as the caucus, same day that the IT director neglected to mention the price increases due to, after a direct question from one of the council members to the caucus. Then on March 1, I didn't ask for this, but I got into a Facebook discussion with the IT director. I had a bunch of questions, never got answers. On the same day, I talked to four DPW workers who basically countered everything he had said, and I had valid questions, didn't get any answers. Then on March 4, in the council meeting, the new contract was proposed, marked with draft all over it, everybody has these documents, and offer good through January 1, 2025. On this same day, I raised performance and more like product concerns. Those kind of went unanswered by most of the council. And then on the 11th, when council voted on a 3-2 despite objections from councilman, councilmembers Schuster and McCandrew, and multiple citizens, it was made known that there was an unpaid invoice for January to March, confirmed the unauthorized use of this software before contract was ever approved by council. So the administration unilaterally decided that they were going to intermittently use the software before you guys approved of it. And it's like the answer was, oh yeah, there's an invoice, but we didn't pay it yet. And if we don't, if council doesn't agree to the contract tonight, the solicitor said he was sure that there would probably be a legal action from Rubicon. Well, what would be the basis for that legal action? We didn't sign the renewal yet. So what's the point of these meetings if the administration just does whatever they want? This is like theater. What's the point of all of you guys talking? What's the point of all of us coming here if they just do whatever they want? I think this is a huge deal. Then on March 19, the mayor came up to me at an event, I didn't ask for this either, accused me of alleging corruption on her part, misrepresenting my comment that RouteWare's Portland, Oregon base was interesting. I still think it's interesting. That's all I said. She dismissed interim use concerns, saying Rubicon wasn't upset, so there's no aggrieved party. Well, the taxpayers and the DPW workers are the aggrieved party in this instance. On March 18 and March 25, council meetings, I asked who authorized the interim use and why no holdover existed. No answers emerged. So today, I have some key concerns and calls to action. Rubicon operated for 70-plus days without a valid contract or council approval, accruing unpaid invoices. Who authorized this and under what budget? The draft renewals expired offer good through date questions its enforceability. Why wouldn't we get the date amended on the contract before we put it into the record and signed it? Attorney Gilbry made a warning that there would be a legal action from Rubicon if we voted no on it that night before the vote. How could we say that, and what was the basis for that comment? Rubicon promised $395,000 in annual savings, but there's still no before and after on these proven savings. The administration acted before approval, and the mayor dismissed my concerns. I think this is a big deal, and I think it undermines this council's legislative power. So I think you guys should be trying to figure out answers for who authorized this, under what budget and authority, and what specific legal grounds did Rubicon have if you guys were to vote no, because that doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thanks. Attorney Gilbry, is there an explanation for how would we use Rubicon for 30 days, 60 days without a contract?
Well, that happens, Mr. President, in all levels of government, and it happens just in private industry as well. I can't speak for Rubicon, and that day that I made this statement about a potential suit, that's true, there could be a potential suit. I don't know if Rubicon would do that. I have no idea. I don't work for Rubicon. That being said, there's nothing unusual for a company, particularly when they're in negotiations, and when they're looking, they know, in fact, that this body was considering legislation to extend the contract. But somebody would have to talk to somebody from Rubicon to find out why they took the chance of not getting paid for the two months that they were allowing the city to use it outside of the contract.
So is it fair to say they took a risk?
Correct. And that's exactly, that happens, I don't have to tell you, Mr. King, I mean, you're working for a business who deals with governmental entities. That happens all the time in these type of situations. So it's not unusual by any means that something like that would happen.
Mr. Boldeberg, the invoice from January to March, can we find out if that was an invoice for work done during January or March, or if that was a holdover invoice from prior to December 24?
I will, sir.
And then if it is indeed from work done January to March, can we find out who it was that authorized that and where it came from?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. I'm Rick Whittle, property owner, taxpayer, candidate, independent candidate for mayor of Scranton. I'd like to talk about what I see as the overriding problem. I've been talking about this a while. I've gotten sidetracked with looking into this Chris McNulty case where he is in jail for $50,000. And police officer, Scranton police officer, doesn't show up for the preliminary hearing on March 27, and it's postponed till tomorrow. But what bothers me is the economics of all this. You know, it's like, if on the spot, if a hospital employee can point to somebody and say he's a danger to himself or somebody else, that we can take his liberty. It appears to me exactly what happened. They tied him up, and then the police come, and the police, of course, go on the side of the security guard, and they say, you know, in the paper, you know, that he's homeless. I'm still trying to find out who coined him homeless, and he attacks security guards, but apparently he was tied up, and he was spitting at them, and it doesn't make sense. The problem is, the way I see it, is, you know, justice delayed is justice denied, and it's just the fact that if a person has a 302 or a 1551 on them, they pay for it. And if it's a homeless guy, Medicaid pays for it. So the way the money flows, it's a win-win situation for the city, but it's a complete injustice due to the due process in the judicial branch. And I see that as the biggest problem. Are there any federal grant writers on, within the legislative branch of the Scranton government?
I'm certain there are.
There are?
I would believe so.
Yeah, I'd like to look into that because it seems like they're following the laws of these judges and just what has been going on with the commissioners the last month. You know, it all has to do with the Home Rule Charter, and it's up to the Court of Common Please judge, and they have Republican judges and Democrat judges. It just doesn't seem, it's not constitutional because there's no checks and balances on anything. It's like we're booming ahead like in the Chris McNulty case. He's in jail, you know, he's charged with, you know, all these things. That's how prosecutors work, overcharge them. He spit. He said, do you want me to spit on you again? And, you know, but no one, and the lawyers are calling in, and there are no lawyers here. There really are none. You know, I found out that, you know, this Lackawanna Probono and Northeast Penn Legal, they don't represent you. They're in with the judiciary. They get paid, but, you know, just like the Area Agency on Aging, they closed the Health Department in the county, and, you know, they use that. And last weekend, you know, all these people protesting, these are the NGOs. Taxpayers paid for these people to be bussed in and come into Scranton, and, you know, it's a long thing to explain, but it's the same thing that happened, you know, was explained in this book, with our mayor being from Portland. This is a book by a guy from Portland. If you read the book, he explains how Soros has opened society, funded all the people in the George Floyd peaceful protests, and that's our government that's working. We have to get our government back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Is there anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments.
Just a few comments. It was mentioned that there hasn't been really any paving done. It's not true. Over, and I don't have the list in front of me, but just some of the streets I know that have been paved. North Washington Avenue, Marion Street, Meadow Avenue, Hemlock Street, Mountain Lake Road, East Elm Street, Cherry Street, Bird Street, Derby Avenue, Roland Avenue. So we can't say, and there's a lot more than what I just read there. Those are ones I'm just picking off the top of my head. So there has been paving going on over the last, at least the last three and a half years that I've been here. And as far as pools are concerned, I know a lot of people are, it seems like a lot of people are running for mayor, and everybody's complaining that there's, they're gonna build pools. Well, they're gonna be fortunate that if they get elected mayor, that almost all the pools, they're gonna be built. It's a process, it takes time. They have to be designed, they have to get the funding. But we have pools being built at Naog, we have pool being fixed up at Connell Park, we have a new pool being built at Weston Field, and a skate park on top of that. There's splash pads going over on Capousa Avenue. So whoever gets to be the next mayor is gonna be in good shape, because the pools are gonna be ready. For 2026, I guess, we'll have a new mayor. As far as, I sit here and I listen, and I don't like to get into national politics either, but I have to sit here and listen to it usually every Tuesday night. It's interesting how people come and bash, and they, you know, Biden, former President Biden and Biden Street, yet the present individual that sits in the White House, he made a prediction. He said, we're gonna have a crash, and we're gonna have a crash like a 1929 crash if she gets in. And he said, furthermore, let's see, there we go, there we go. You'll have a depression the likes of which you've never seen. Your 401K will go to hell, and it'll be a very, very sad day for the country. Well, guess what? Our 401Ks all just went to hell in the last two weeks. As was pointed out earlier, six and a half trillion dollars have been lost in the stock market. It dropped, the dollar's dropped 5,994 points since December. So if this is making America great again, wow, where are we going? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. Back a few months ago, I discussed that there were some plans for the West Scranton Corridor, and this is the area located at Euclid Avenue and North Main Avenue on the railroad side. There's a large field there on the side, it abuts the railroad tracks, and there was grant money allocated there. It went to the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. There's gonna be an entrance there to West Scranton, and there's gonna be signage put up saying, welcome to West Scranton, or welcome to Tripp Park. I had some questions into the administration, and they sent me some answers back about this, but I haven't had an update since. So I'd like to ask Mr. Voldenberg, when it comes to that project, can we ask, when was the grant awarded? How much was the grant for? I believe it was $750,000. What was the timeline on the grant, and what work is to be completed, and when will the work start?
I'll ask those questions.
Thank you. We did talk a little bit about in caucus, Penn Ambulances. We had Penn Ambulances come in for a caucus, we spoke with them. Out of that meeting, it was a request of council that the administration speak with Penn Ambulances to move forward with some sort of plan for ambulance services in the city. We were told that some informal conversations may have happened. Can we find out if indeed any meetings have occurred with Penn Ambulances, and if not, do they expect to have a meeting in the near future?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you. And then, when it comes to the DPW contract, I know we've been getting answers saying that it's being worked on, the administration's working on it with DPW, but can we find out, have there been any meetings? What are the dates of the meetings, and are there any meetings set up for the near future?
I'll get that information.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Smol.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothchild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. First, the curb cut that we've been asking for at Colfax and Olive, I still haven't received any additional updates from what I've given last, to my knowledge. Is that correct, Mr. Voldenberg? We haven't gotten anything else on that?
I'll ask the director tomorrow.
Okay, excellent. I'd really like to find out when that's going to happen.
I will.
Okay, thank you. And I had received a response from what we were asking last week on the outdoor pools, and specifically the zero-entry ones, and if there would be lifts available for people to be able to enter the pool. The response that we received was that the Parks Department has pool lifts at Weston Fields Indoor Pool, Connell and Weston Park. Weston Field and Naog's outdoor pools will not need a lift as the zero-entry sloped entrance suffices for ADA compliance. Accessible parking spaces are available near each pool's entrance. But I wasn't really asking about ADA compliance, because there's one thing about, you can be compliant with what they require, but then are you truly meeting the needs of the disabled community? And so that's where my concern comes from, and I do want to push to at least have the availability of Aqua Wheelchairs, like we were discussing last week, because even though you have zero entry, if someone is not ambulatory or they are a wheelchair user, then they're still not going to be able to bring their daily wheelchair into, in order for them to enter the water. So I still want to continue that discussion and push for us to be able to have those available for the public at those pools that don't have the lifts. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothchild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So I also have some questions about the pools that are gonna be built over the next couple of years, because I heard different numbers or different depths, whether it was on Facebook, or in the paper, or the last time we actually met. So for clarity's sake, I ask for, please advise the specifics related to the actual depth of all city pools, new and updated, from the shallow entry side to the deep end of each pool. So what I got back was Weston Field Indoor Pool, three feet to nine and a half. Okay? We kind of already knew that. Connell, three feet to 13. Weston Park, 3.5 to 13. Weston Field Outdoor Activity Pool, four feet. And then the Naog Activity Pool. So I'm assuming that's the youth pool, that's gonna be three feet. So we didn't get the schematics or specifics on the lap pool. So please, Mr. Voldenberg, I'd like to expand my inquiry as to the depth of that pool.
I will, Mr. McCandrick.
But what scares me, and I don't like is, and I know through some of the videos I saw of the mayor taking, you know, pools cost money, and so does water, and that's understandable in maintenance, but what costs money more is liability when people get hurt. So if you have a three-foot, I heard three-foot, now they're stating four-foot pool at two locations, kids are gonna jump in that, kids are gonna dive in that. That's an instinctive thing to do. And what I looked at is, you know, the American Red Cross recommends, jumping from the side of a pool should be at least six feet. Diving into a pool should be nine. We discussed, discussed in caucus, I remember growing up where so many people got hurt diving into a four-foot pool. Some with lasting injuries and paralysis, so. And I know we could put up a bunch of no diving signs and stuff to that nature, but I just think if we're gonna have and bring back the big pool that Naog once had, and it's only gonna be four feet, that, I don't think that's good enough. I don't think that's good, well, it's definitely, in my personal opinion, it's not good enough for me, but I don't think it's good enough for the masses that want to use it. We're gonna have a splash pad there, which is fine. This is gonna be, you know, if this is the youth pool, okay, but I want to know the depth of the other pool, because I did not receive that information. If you would please do that, Mr. Voldenberg.
I will, sir.
Okay. And then the Showmobile. So I'm here six years. So over the course of six years, I've heard from actually a previous DPW director that sometimes the Showmobile, at the administration or the mayor's discretion, is free. I'm always saying that because I was told that. Can I confirm that sitting here? No. But when I'm told something by a director, I believe it or should believe it. I don't know if that still takes place, or if that's still a practice, but would you please reach out to administration, Mr. Voldenberg, and inquire as to, does that still happen? Is there any organizations in the city that receives the Showmobile for free? And that's great, but I think this, these poor kids should have this, if that's the case, and this happens, I think these children should have the same opportunity.
I will, Mr. McCandrick.
Clarity for that, thank you. Another issue that, it's brought up to me a couple of times, is, so on St. Anne's Street, Rundle Street, over my neck of the woods, and Cornell, and them streets that go all the way to the bottom of Stallone, right? So trucks are trying to get back to, say, Kane Warehouse, their GPS is telling them, hey, go up St. Anne's Street. And when they get there, obviously Kane is only a few hundred yards away, but there's no road. So what's happening on these streets is lines are being knocked down by the trucks, right? So an old power, I mean, I'm sorry, an old phone line, not a big deal. And I know it happens a lot in the winter when there's ice or snow weighing them down, but, you know, old cable lines, a lot of people are streaming stuff, they're maybe not live or whatever, it's not a big deal, but it's a nuisance, because somebody has to be called. But what I'm hearing lately, which scares me to death, is power lines are coming down. So they're very dangerous. I hate to see some kid get hurt, killed, God bless, electrocuted. So this has become an issue, that it's continuously happening on all these streets because of GPS. So with that said, for the safety, you know, of our residents that live on these streets and moving forward, could we have the city engineer take a look at this, do a study as to what we can do with it? I mean, we can't change GPS, obviously, but maybe we can post some type of signs, so, you know, we can just make this a safer path for everybody.
I'll submit that tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. And I believe that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I have a few reminders for our veterans is the first one. We do have, again, this year, $100,000 available for grants for nonprofit organizations located within the city of Scranton to serve our veterans and their families. Applications are open now, and they are due by Tuesday, April 29th. You can actually apply online through OpenGov and type in Scranton Veterans 2025, and you could fill the application online. It's basically the same one we've been doing for the past few years. The funds are to help our local nonprofits continue to serve their respective members, our veteran communities, and their families. If, you also have to be a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(19), or a 501(c)(23) that serves veterans and their families. And of course, you'll have to fill out what you're gonna use the money for and stuff, like they have in the past, but that is open right now. Same as last year, the funding decisions will be made by a committee, including representation of the veterans. The programs funded in part or in full are available, and priority we give to applications who demonstrate how programs will prioritize and support low-income veterans. So, and this has to be done, remember, it's got to be in by the 29th of April. If you want to get any information of this, you can go online, or you can call Sherri Frabel at our OECD office, or our community development manager, Liza Carroll. They're both on the website. Put their first initial in and spell their last name, .gov, and they will come up to their website. Also available is grant money for our local nonprofit community centers. This is also due by April 29th, and they are all of city buildings, if you need, I don't know, windows, roof repair, I think we did West Scranton last year, a roof repair or something there, but also the same people to contact, and they also have to be in by the 29th. I'm stressing this, because there's only a few weeks left. That's it for the grants. Political signs, advertising a person or seeking a political office or a political cause, or opinion or referendum, or a matter of political concern in which relates to a scheduled election or a matter upcoming vote by government body. So I was asked to let everyone know that the signs, no sign, is allowed in the public right-of-way. So anything on the outside of the sidewalk is a public right-of-way. Entrance to the expressway, any public right-of-way. We have been taking the signs down from these people that are saying they're buying their houses, realtors, whoever has it in public right-of-way, we are taking them down. So if you're missing signs, the DPW that's been removing them, go down there, they store them for you down there. They don't just throw them out. And if they're not there, our parks and rec people also pick them up, and they remove signs also. So they may be at Weston Field. So if your signs are taken down, they say that they do store them for a while. So if you have them out, and they're in the right-of-way, and they're missing, it's because they don't belong there. Also, this is a recap of a meeting in downtown Scranton on Friday, or 4/4/25. This is what's going to be repaired as far as the streets and the courts. The first one is Forrest Court, second is Dix Court, and Kresler Court. They're going to be full width resurfacing in both of those courts. They're gonna cut as close as they can to the buildings on both sides, and they are going to be paved. They're also going to be paving Lackawanna Avenue from Penn Ave to Adams Ave, Adams and Cedar. The lanes will be resurfaced and up to the double yellow lines, and also they have to repaint everything and put all the dashes and the lines back down. Lackawanna Avenue from Adams and Cedar to Kresler. PennDOT Road, with that tore up half of the road, they're gonna relay the entire half of that road that was torn up. Contractor will conform to all DOT requirements, because that is a DOT street. So they also, when, and PennDOT requires you, if you're paving, you've got to do the entire intersection. So if you see that one part is cut up, PennDOT requires you to do the entire intersection. So also, Mulberry Street, Mulberry Street also is a PennDOT road, and the contractor knows that, and they will resurface the entire intersections. Also, South Washington Avenue, from River Street up to Lackawanna Avenue. So if you've driven there, you will see, the one side is all torn up, and then it switches, and it goes to the other side. So they're going to do that entire half width that they tore up, from River Street to the entrance of the mall. Then from there, they're going to widen it and do the entire road up to the mall parking garage intersection at Lackawanna Avenue, because they crossed and they cut that out. Also, while downtown, looking at these, a number of UGI pave cuts were identified in the walk-through, and they do not appear to be properly compacted, and they need to be addressed. So we've asked that that will be taken care of also. And Stefurski, who looks like they are going to be the job, said they're going to start in two to three weeks, and they are authorized UGI paving company. So they will be out this week, and they will be marking the streets with pink paint. So if you see that out, that's everything that's going to be paved that they've cut up and torn up downtown. And that's it for the paving for downtown. Now, this is for FEMA. This is our present administration, and FEMA ends wasteful politicized grant program, returning agency to core mission of helping Americans recovering from natural disaster. So pretty much what that means is FEMA is ending the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities program. So the brick grants that we applied for, and we've gone through the first two stages of getting them, will not happen now. That has been taken away from, with That has been taken away from, with the Trump, Trump administration and that money is gone. So the Brick Grant Program, another example of wasteful and ineffective FEMA program. So, but I guess they say they are going to help Americans recovering from natural disasters, but they took the money away, so I don't know how they're going to do that. But approximately $182 million of funding is gone and there's really nothing we can do about it. It's gone. So that's one program that is gone and I certainly hope the Meadowbrook Project isn't the next one on the chopping block because they've been seen to be taking all the money that we have. I called the mayor this morning when I found out this information and to see what we can do, if there's anything that we can do. And the mayor and the administration had already sent a letter out to John Fetterman, Dave McCormick, Representative Rob Brezinahand, on behalf of the city, want to express our deep concern following a recent decision by FEMA to terminate the Building Resilient Infrastructure Community Brick Program and canceling all pending grants, applications from fiscal year 2020 to through 2023. And we were in that group. This was made public, I believe it was like late Friday, last Friday afternoon. And, and we do have a, a direct impact on our city. This is for all those people that we were going to buy the properties and that they were always being flooded. So in July 2024, two of Scranton's brick applications, they advanced, passed the initial federal review and achieved that position. So the community, we were pretty much sure that they were going through at that time, but evidently that money is not available anymore. I will ask Mr. Volenberg, instead of reading two pages to you, I will give you this, you will put this on the city's website, if you will?
I will, sir.
Thank you. And one more thing from last week. This is a response from Neighbor Works. They did send us a response into my request and is a response to the council's request, "Please be advised that Neighbor Works, Northeastern Pennsylvania, is exercising due diligence in assessing issues related to our employees' candidacy. The organization and Board of Directors continues to be prudent in our fact gathering and analysis. This includes making a formal request to Penn State Ethics Commission for an advisory opinion on the existence of any conflict of interest in connection with Mr. Pusley's candidacy or election if he is successful. We appreciate your attention to this matter. Regards, Shane Powers, President and CEO of Neighbor Works." Thank you for the response. That is it, Mr. Volenberg.
5B for introduction and ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the Kaiser Valley Flood Protection Project, Group Three of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the Eminent Domain Code if required.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, as similar legislation has come through, can we just find out, Mr. Volenberg, if the residents have been notified and by what means they have been notified?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, installing an all-way stop at the intersection of Capous Avenue and New York Street, as well as installation of international-style crosswalks and stop bars on all approaches to the intersection, and installation of ADA-compliant curb ramps at all corners of the intersection.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance, installing a multi-way stop at the intersection of Fraude Avenue and Brook Street to improve traffic operations at this intersection.
At this time, I entertain a motion, item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know that this is something that the residents have been requesting for a long time and we've been trying to get this to happen, so this is going to greatly improve safety in that intersection. So I'm glad to see this coming before us.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction and ordinance, authorizing installation of school zone signage for St. Clair-St. Paul School Main Campus, relocation of existing signage and painting of all crosswalks with perpendicular crosswalk bars.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know we've had a couple of speakers come here in the past and asking about safer streets for this, for these schools and I'm happy that finally there's going to be some additional signage and, and line painting there to make it safer. Green Ridge is certainly a very busy street and it's right near Green Ridge and between Green Ridge and Marion. And yeah, I'm just happy that it'll be safer for students now.
I'm glad to see this happen as well.
I've been bringing up this issue since before the school year and, and I'm thrilled that it's finally coming to fruition. So very happy for the residents over there. I'm glad for their patience because they waited a long time. I'm glad to see this is finally happening.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department from Greg L. Sunday and Joan M. Sunday in the amount of $5,000 in memory of Scranton firefighter Stephen Sunday to purchase equipment.
At this time, I entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed to Council Number 65, 2025, in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements or titles of land required for permanent easements in order to complete the Kaiser Valley Flood Protection Project, Group Two of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the Eminent Domain Code if required.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, filed to Council Number 66, 2025, in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements or titles of land required for permanent and temporary easements in order to complete the East Mountain Stormwater and Drainage Improvement Project, Group Two of easements, and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to Section 302 of the Eminent Domain Code if required.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed to Council Number 64, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding between the City of Scranton and Borough of Music regarding coordination on zoning, planning and code enforcement of 53 Glen Mara National Boulevard.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smell?
Yes. I hear by declare, item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 194, 2025, resolution for plan revision for new land development located in the 500 block of Wyoming Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smell?
Yes. I hear that by declare, item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 195, 2025, resolution for plan revision for new land development, Weston Field Pool Complex located in the 900 block of Providence Road.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smell?
Yes. I hear by declare, item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.[1775.26]